All right, we are now recording.
All right, we'll call Fountain and Planning Commissions meeting for May 4th to order. First docket item is going to be FI dash two zero oh dash zero one one. Request to annexate in R12 residential district tax map number zero five six two zero two zero one zero zero six zero six. Approximately one hundred and twenty-two point eight five acres on Jenkins Bridge Road. It is Blue Water Civil Design. Mark three properties. Greg, are they own or any comments or anything?
Yes, sir, there is. The applicant is on the line. That's Mr. Paul Harrison.
You unmuted, Paul?
Yes, I'm unmuted. I'm here.
We can hear any, any comments that you may have at this time.
Um, well, we're proposing, I guess that Greg will go through the staff report. Here shortly, but we're proposing a, two subdivisions and, and really the reason we had to break them up was for naming rights. But essentially Briar Gate and Cedar Gap are one development, one fee simple property owner right now. He's looking to do a residential detached subdivision. This is a property that we recently annexed into the city of Fountain Inn. We've had several meetings in the past about sewer in this area and potential growth in this area. So my client, Mark Three Properties, is seeking to develop this, like I said, as a single family detached subdivision. With one access all located directly off of South Carolina Highway four eighteen. And then the other access would come off of Jenkins Bridge Road. And with that, I mean, I'll be glad to answer any questions that the commissioners have. So I'll be, I'll be on here for the duration.
Any questions from our panel as of right this second?
This has already been annexed in the fountain, or is that part of what we're doing? We're annexing it now as part of our process here. I don't have any questions at this point, but I may after I hear from Greg.
Nothing else. I guess we'll go ahead and get Greg's report and then we'll follow up with some questions.
Yes, sir. Thank you commissioners, members of council and members of the public who are listening in to our first digital planning commission meeting. This report will be from planning and development staff. For docket number FI twenty twenty dash zero one one. This is, this is an annexation request. From Blue Water Civil for the property location on Jenkins Bridge Road and four eighteen, fourteen otherwise known as Milken Drive. For the record, that tax map number is zero five six two oh two oh one zero zero six oh six. That acreage is about one hundred and twenty-three acres. So it's just one tract, but it's a very large tract of one hundred and twenty-three acres. And it's currently unzoned in Greenville County. So Blue Water Mark Three are looking to annex into the city fountain and limits in order to establish zoning and establish zoning of R12 residential district. In order to build that subdivision. It's currently vacant right now. It's surrounded by other relatively rural or vacant lands. But as the applicant described, they're ultimately seeking to build two subdivisions on this one hundred and twenty-three acre tract. So that layout of that subdivision is not necessarily up for debate today. Just to reiterate and emphasize, the only thing that's being recommended to city council today is should it be annexed? And if it is annexed, what should that zoning designation be? Should it be what the applicant requested at R12 residential? And just, I'm going to go through your staff reports. If you have it up on your computer, please try to follow along. If not, I can bring it up at any time throughout the presentation. Actually, you excuse me one moment. Sorry about that. So the surrounding zoning for this, it's important that these are Greenville County or City of Fountain Inn designations. The ones that are in Greenville County are RS residential suburban. This may, this is somewhat of a placeholder zoning designation. It's just a general somewhat large lot traditional subdivision suburban type of development. If they want something more dense, it's usually rezoned. Or some surrounding properties are RR1, which is a rural designation that the city fountain doesn't have, but the, the county does. So this is farmland or large acre tracts that specifically make it difficult to be large subdivisions. And then the last is there's unzoned property around this vicinity. Unzoned property has no zoning and therefore can be just about anything, maybe commercial, residential, industrial, and that's what this property is. So unzoned property is a little volatile and it's, it's good for the surrounding neighborhood. Staff's opinion to have zoning so you know, have expectations of what's going to be built around you. Your staff report shows the large unique dimensions of the tract. They are essentially bisected by a large tributary creek and a floodplain. One side of the one hundred and twenty-three acres has access off of four eighteen there to an intersection. Should a driveway be put there that essentially be a four-way stop? Your map shows a right-of-way road that kind of goes upright by it. That's been, since been abandoned. That road actually, that Jenkins Bridge Road actually takes a bend to the left. So there's not a lot of conflict at this time though, because that road orientation has been changed. I also showed an adjacency to city limits map in your staff report that highlights two things. How far it is from the last large tract of land that the city fountain and annexed that was widely covered by Greenville News and other publications as one of the largest things we've ever annexed. That's the Wilson Bridge Road tract. That's about three thousand feet from this to the north. And then it also highlights how we are adjacent to this particular property. That's highlighted in a boxing green that shows a little strip of land. That's how this is able to be up for annexation tonight. Is there's a strip of land that touches fountain and city limits there from east to west. And that's how this is contiguous to the city fountain and limits. Couple other larger maps to factor in and any annexation rezoning request. Your future land use map. That is shown for this tract as two things. One is that it's in a light yellow color from our two thousand and seventeen master plan. That light yellow color indicates that it is medium to low density residential. Medium to low density means something like an R12 or R15 zoning. So the lots have to be at least twelve thousand or fifteen thousand square feet or that approximate density. So the applicant is requesting R12 and the future land use map says that's appropriate for most of the site. I say most of the site because there's a portion that is actually off of our future land use map. So when the master plan was created in seventeen, twenty seventeen, excuse me, the document creators may not even foresee growing this fast, this far over to the west. So this annexation would definitely be the westernmost expansion of our city limits. And something that we didn't necessarily plan for and maybe triggered due to infrastructure. We didn't know about at the time. And as for zoning, the same thing applies on your zoning map. You can see it's somewhat circled in green. There's not any residential zoning on the zoning map because this isn't part of fountain at the time. Your zoning map shows some of that RR1 or RS zones indicating green or that white, which is the unzoned areas, but the closest available zoning from a city standpoint is that C2 commercial or that red color. So the closest thing we have to residential in this area is still zone commercial. So we don't have any other city fountain in residential zonings that close in this vicinity. It doesn't mean there's not any homes around here. There are, they just are not in city limits or they're in city limits and they're zoned for commercial use. You can have a home in C2, but it may be that that land transitions to commercial over time. This is exemplified by the four-way there. Green Pond Road and four eighteen where we've annexed some industrial land. So this area is definitely growing. Last exhibits I'll, I'll highlight are the present conditions of the road in the area. You can see that Jenkins Bridge Road is not a heavily trafficked road. It is not built to be a heavily trafficked road. It doesn't have any painted lines on it. It is a county maintained, maintained road, not a state road. And is frankly not even at the width enough for two cars at this present time. So we have to factor in if this is annexed and zoned, this will lead to development. And that development needs to have adequate infrastructure, including roads to encourage that growth. You can see some of the intersections where these residences would go in and out of. SC four eighteen has been repaved relatively recently. So those intersections are pretty clear, but they're not, they're not large intersections. And then intersection of highway five, six fifty-one and Milken Drive, excuse me. That is where potentially one of the subdivision entrances would go. You can see that comes in it to a relative T. So it has a good layout, but there is some curvature in the road there that people would access. With all those things in place, I'll just note that the closest residential neighborhood is off of Tallpines Road called Kittleton Place. And all the others immediately surrounding residences are on large tract of land or undeveloped. My dogs. The proposed annexation and concurrent zoning of the subject properties would join property directly adjacent to the city limits. And would permit similar land uses to those properties adjacent within the city. Despite it being C2 commercial zoning because that C2 allows for residences. Annexed property would not match any adjacent zoning as proposed. We don't have any residential zoning next to it. The prop, properties adjacent to city limits as discussed, that's on the east side. The annexation would not extend city limits to create a relatively contiguous city boundary. It'd be a clear western expansion of our city limits because it's only joined to the city by that strip of land and we don't have anything that far west. So this is kind of a long-term expansion of the city limits. The future land use map included in this report indicates the properties outside the city fountain inn, but future land uses recommend are recommended for medium-low density residential. Medium-low density again is any single-family zone district that is three point six units per acre or less than density. And/or lots that are fifteen thousand or twelve thousand square feet. More than likely, this will be the former than the latter. It'll be something that has a density of three point six units per acre or less and have open space development. So the only thing we're factoring in is do you annex it and what the zoning should be? But I did send you the preliminary site plans and the applicant has talked about these and their names. So that you know what kind of density is being foreseen for the area. Staff is able to support the annexation due to adjacency to city limits and conformity with the land use map. It proposes medium-low density residential as what the applicant is proposing in the application by using R12 zoning. That said, this annexation only makes sense for the long-term growth of the city. If the infrastructure and road improvements keep pace with development. This is a hundred and twenty-three acre tract. It should not be taken lightly and it's in the city. That's, that much land requires additional services, whether that's road, trash, fire EMS. This is already in our fire district. So it serves in that purpose. But other infrastructure includes road and sewer infrastructure. The road infrastructure, again, that's a county road on Jenkins Bridge Road and a state road on four eighteen. So four eighteen is out of our control. That's, that's by state improvements. And this applicant has provided a traffic study showing what those improvements could be on SC four eighteen. If this development is built and the zoning is annexed. But we also have to factor Jenkins Bridge Road and the standard it's in today being a county road. If this was annexed, this may become at least partially or wholly a city road and would need to be widened. And that burden would fall on the applicant to expand the right-of-way or the, the width of that road to accommodate this growth. Lastly, the request to annex and zone this property is R12 single-family residential would be consistent with the future land use map. And city of fountain in control sewer networks in this area is dependent on this annexation being approved and added to city limits. If this property is developed, this would be city of fountain and sewer. As would the Wilson Bridge Road property. And there's a actual sewer corridor under consider consideration for this part of town. Part of this annexation request is a factor of the city, the city of fountain inn foresee growth in this area and do we want to be in control of it? So this is long-term planning and failure to do this planning or even annexing this property will result, result in another sewer provider controlling this entire basin. So there's no motivation to annex to the city if we're not controlling that infrastructure. That said, you know, there's a lot of serious concerns with zoning parcel that allows several one hundred plus lot subdivisions. And particularly when one of them has its only egress and ingress of Jenkins Bridge Road. A traffic study and widening this county road is necessary to support the particular parcels residential growth. The traffic study again has been initially provided by the applicant and we're happy to share that with anybody. But road widening is, is necessary in one manner or another, staff's opinion. The planning commission and city council must weigh if the long-term planning of Southern Fountain Inn outweighs the access concerns of a new portion of city limits that's zoned R12. With that staff's recommendation is approval, the annexation and rezon to R12 residential district. Due to those sewer infrastructure concerns in particular. But any subdivision review will be subject to review again by the planning commission. And any site layout or site access concerns need to be addressed again at that next planning commission meeting. I know that was a lot. So if you have any questions or concerns, please let me know.
And I've got everybody on mute. So you can either unmute yourself or just wave and I'll unmute you.
Any questions for Greg?
So I have a question. So the road improvements for the county road and things like making sure sidewalks are on the perimeter of all subdivisions. Once it was annexed, that's all going to come back in a subdivision review, correct?
Correct, yeah. So we could feasibly and technically consider annexing this property and seeing what the zoning is without any knowledge of the subdivision layout. If there's any sidewalks where those access points are. Legally, we are only deciding whether to recommend annexation to city council and what that zoning is. So we have that knowledge now. So it's good to discuss it, but those things like sidewalk requirements or road widening, those have to go through. Like you stated, the subdivision advisory committee with all those traffic engineers, all those county folks in order to determine the, the capacity. I have already spoken with one of the county engineers, Kurt Walters regarding this development, just because most of our developments are either fountain in roads or state roads. And this one's unique in that it has a large county maintained road. So I wanted to make sure that I had the adequate knowledge of what Jenkins Bridge Road is and can become. Should this be annexed because some of that responsibility might be transferred over to us. So that's an important factor as well.
Is that common on a county road to turn to city road once it's annexed in?
Usually annexations add any adjacent right-of-way to the center line. Say if it crossed on both sides, we would annex the whole thing. If it's just the one side, usually the city will, will take control of that from the county. But in this case, there may not be that much right-of-way. So that's on the developer, actually not the, the city or county to widen that road and add that right-of-way, that additional space. So that's, that's a very important factor is who's going to be widening this road.
So then costs and infrastructure wise as well for that sewer line, how, how does that benefit the city of fountain man to have control over that sewer?
Greg, I don't mind talking a little bit about the, the sewer aspect.
Sure, sure. Go ahead, John.
So we were, the city was approached by REWA several months back with their intention of building a regional sewer pump station rail, right near that Jenkins Bridge property, which would in essence open up sewer for all of the available properties south of Wilson Bridge Road, all the way down to, to four eighteen. There, they would be installing the pump station and the force main. But then they were looking for an entity to assist with extending the gravity sewer main. This is, it's technically in Metro Connect's sewer territory. They, Metro was extremely interested in being the sewer provider for this area. The, the city has taken the stance after, you know, a lot of discussion that, you know, if, if REWA is going to make the, the the investment into a regional sewer pump station. It's because that they anticipate growth happening in this, happening in this area regardless. From, from the city's standpoint, if there, if Metro connects is the sewer provider. There's going to be very little incentive for any of these parcels to annex into the city limits of Fountain Inn. So if REWA builds the pump station and Metro is the, is the collection sewer provider. Then all of these developments can, along this area, basically from Wilson Bridge South can all feasibly happen. And the city would have no control over it. So the city is tentatively given approval to, to be that sewer provider, which is a, a pretty big investment on, on the city's end to extend that gravity sewer. Sewer main pretty much all the way up the creek up into the Wilson Bridge property. I, I don't think there's a whole lot else other than development always follows sewer infrastructure. And the city feels like having control of that sewer infrastructure allows the city to have a lot more control over the development in that region.
And the city would also get the tap fees. Is that, is that, is it a profit source as well at all? Or is that, is it a loss?
No, it's not a loss. So yes, there would be the, the tap fees and then that, that monthly sewer fee that, that's associated with, with all of those. You know, I'd have to run the numbers. I don't know exactly how many potential lots we would have. But let's say the, the project was a million dollars. I mean, I, I don't know how many years just in the sewer it would take to recoup that. But that, that could be done. There, there's a lot of other revenue sources that would, that would occur besides property taxes. One being building permits and business licenses while all of those developments are being constructed.
Has the city ever done any kind of analysis on, I know this is necessarily a question for whether you sign something or not, but like the financial value of a house, at what point is like break even point where we're able to pay for, you know, fire service, police service, trash pickup, all those things. You know, is it hundred fifty? Is it two fifty? Do, do we know what that number is?
So it's, it's not an exact science. One of the reasons is, is because the city has revenue streams in addition to just property taxes. One of the main ones being fountain and natural gas. That we, we do a fairly decent transfer into our general fund every year, which helps keeps our taxes low. The other big is the, is the city's new solid waste fee. And so right now every lot in, in the city would pay a hundred and fifty-six dollars a year. So in, in most cases, when you have a new subdivision, just that solid waste fee alone would pay for the sanitation services for that subdivision. So not including, you know, the, all the other property tax. I have tentatively figured it to be any around that two fifty mark. Most homes that are valued at two hundred and fifty thousand or more. The, the city either breaks even or, or it's a, it's a benefit to the city's revenues to have that in the city limits.
Like if we, if we didn't annex this, I mean, more than likely gas service would still be provided by Fountain Inn.
Correct. As mentioned, it was, uh, this is already in the city's fire service. We actually have a, our second fire station on Jenkins Bridge Road.
You do on the backside of it, yeah. And then, uh, I was, I was there before. I know what you're talking about. I was just trying to wrap my mind of where, where they're located.
The subdivision, if you just travel down Milken Drive, SC four eighteen. You'll pass the four-way stop, the gas station, the, the two landmarks out there, frankly, are the two gas stations. There's a Spinks gas station and then there's the one of the four-way of Milken Drive and and Green Pond Road. And this lies somewhere in the middle of that, but this is, it feels, it feels like you're out of the city limits when you're out here.
It does. I think, I think my only, what Matt already spoke to it. I guess my, my only concerns was just road improvements, stuff like that, you know, talking about sidewalks. But that discussion is really not going to happen until we see the sucker again, if, if this gets approval for annexation.
Right, yeah. Just for everybody from home, it's a long process deliberately. So we have multiple review processes, everyone's feedback. This is a public hearing. We've got two city council meetings that would need to be held because it would actually add to the city limits, which is a large consideration. So that's, those are two hearings. This be a positive vote. Those are not necessarily the public hearing, but they are public meetings and that you can sign up and speak to them. And we want everyone to provide feedback at that. But things like those sidewalks or if that entrance is a good idea, if that lot is wide enough. That goes through the SAC gauntlet, so to speak, before it comes to planning commission, but that still needs to be approved by the planning commission. You know, things like sidewalks. Greenville County tends to waive some of those requirements if they're not close to any other sidewalks. Planning commissioner here has done well to require those as is our standard on at least one side. So that's something we should continue to uphold.
I mean, to me, it almost, it almost feels like a, I know it's not, it's not technically a shoestring, but it's almost got that feel of this area with connectivity to it later on.
Right. I would say there's kind of two factors in this particular product, project being annexed versus any other ones in this general area. That is only connected to us by a little strip of land, but it's not an adjacent property owner. It's not a different owner. It is still this particular parcel of lands. We don't have to worry about different zoning or different ownership groups or just It is still this particular parcel of lands. We don't have to worry about different zoning or different ownership groups or just kind of being. Not used by another owner. This is all the same group, so it does. Meet that requirement to physically touch. But there's not a lot of things other here out here that would. Either touch or be appropriate for such a development. I can say with a good degree of confidence, this is the furthest down we go, Millican Drive. For a significant period of time, if ever. Due to do that unique kind of conti- contingency consideration also. Not only with our master plan, but the Greenville County Master Plan, playing Greenville County. They basically say this is the furthest extent of any kind of residential development. Anything south of here or west of here is not appropriate for. Large subdivisions, that should be a more rural type.
Any other questions for Greg? Or back to the applicant, either or?
I would like to chime in and say something, if that's okay. You know, I think Greg kind of talked a little bit about this and Sean kind of alluded to it as well, but. In meetings with REWA. You know, if you project north up Parsons Road. There is some existing tracks that are being designed right now. As well as some future larger tracks that are being that could. Or that will be looked at as soon as this gravity sewer is extended by REWA up that basin. And. Those tracks directly touch the other Fountain Inn property on Wilson Bridge Road, so. Although it may seem on the outskirts of the city, and I don't necessarily disagree with that. There is a lot of future growth that's going to be coming to this area. Along north of four eighteen, along Parsons Road, and then connecting back to. Along Old Fairview Road and along Wilson Bridge Road, with some of that already. Being submitted to you guys, and we we have the ability to see a lot of these developments on the front end, because most of the time. To some degree, we're involved with a lot of them. And I would just make a point of this. And I think Greg and 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 Sean alluded to this too. Our ability, I we wanted to approach Fountain Inn upfront because. Our desire would be to annex into Fountain Inn, obviously, but. We are, we are an unzoned piece of property in Greenville County, and you could do. You know, the allowable uses in an unzoned property are numerous. Just about anything you want to do, as long as you meet buffer requirements and those sorts of things. Our plan was to be as transparent as possible with Fountain Inn upfront. And for Fountain Inn to have a say so on what happened with the growth in in this area. And. I just wanted to make those two points.
Thanks, Paul.
Any other questions? The panel?
Nope, I'm good.
All right. Sean, do you have any public comment?
I don't. Greg, I don't believe anybody submitted anything or or. Reached out to us saying that they wanted to speak on this.
No one provided a written submittal for against as public comment. You know, I would have loved to have this at City Hall and had anyone show up that could have. If they thought of some at the last minute, unfortunately, due to COVID nineteen, that's not possible. But this was an open meeting. This is a public meeting. We have attendees on the line. We didn't have any written. Public comment submitted formally or informally. I received a couple of correspondence regarding this property. Because it was posted there for the fifteen plus days with bright orange signs. I talked to an adjacent property owner who just wanted to know why I was putting up the signs and what was going on. And I spoke with another adjacent property owner who lives. Or has land just to the north of this, in between Jenkins Bridge Road and four eighteen. His only comment to me was that he wanted to be sure that. His land was not a part of this application process. You know, state law being that you can't be annexed unless you request it, and that's what was conveyed to him, so. Unfortunately, not a lot of public comment on this time. Hopefully, we get some between now and any council meetings as well.
Appreciate it, Greg. Yes, with that, move to board discussion.
I like it. I think it fits future land use map. I agree with the Wilson Bridge property kind of pushing out that direction, too. There's going to be more infill. I think there will be some info to the city on this side of three eighty five. And because it meets the future land map, it's R twelve, a decent zoning. I like this property, with the exception, it's going to need roads improved, it's going to need connected sidewalks. That stuff when we see it back to the subdivision, but as far as annexing and zoning. I I think it's, I like it.
Yeah, I would agree. I don't think there's any, I guess, way or reason to make a contention at this point, but. Subdivision advisory. Come back up, be able to see that at that point and address it, correct, Greg?
Yes, sir, yeah, well, I'm welcome any and all comments, whether through this process or that subdivision advisory committee process. To get a subdivision that we like, should it be annexed?
I mean, one hundred percent, if if something. According to the board was not was not good as far as road infrastructure or whatever, it can one hundred percent be. Shut down at that point from being annexed, or is it too late at that point? Pass, pass.
Not some some of the important conversations you would have at that meeting, I want, I don't want to get in too much detail. On that, but things such as connectivity, access, number of access points, those are land development requirements. You should not approve any subdivision if they don't meet those requirements.
So that that subdivision advisory would have to state the road improvements. Then the applicant not wanting to do that in order to stop it, is that the way I understand it?
From past subdivision decisions. The SE DOT and the local road provider, in this case, the county. They provide comment on that. At that SAC meeting. More than likely than not, based on their rules. If it's a large subdivision over ninety or hundred lots, they're going to want to see some kind of traffic impact study. Sometimes those are only regarding intersections and traffic lanes, which is somewhat of the documentation that was provided to y'all. But they would not only need to receive that and review it, but they would need to provide their comment on if that was adequate before it got to us. There we're getting a little better in that these impact studies are getting. To the SAC before they get to the municipalities rather than getting the municipalities and the traffic studies incomplete yet.
Thankful for that. Any other board discussion? Not. Any motions?
I'll make a motion to approve the annexation to the city limits of Fountain Inn with the R twelve zoning.
I'll second it. We got a motion and a second. All those in favor. State your name and say, I guess, for the record. For those those in favor, state your names, say aye.
Matthew Waschkowski, aye.
Brent Fonicleoffe, aye. Aaron Hood, aye.
Dusty Keller, aye.
Did we lose Wendell?
He's still on. He's been on there. But there's been a lot of feedback, so I've had him muted a couple times.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Just need your vote, sir.
Wendell Compton, aye.
Thank you. All right, motion carries. All right, well, let's move on to our next docket number, which is FI twenty twenty dash zero one four. This is the rezone from R fifteen residential district to office development district. Tax map number. Three four four. Whoa. Zero 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 two zero zero six zero zero, approximately point four six acres. Applicant is Jake Dickens. Looks like on behalf of the trust. Any comments from the applicant at this time?
Hey, Jake, you're unmuted.
Yes, I'm here. Uh, no comments other than, you know, we're. This is a property that was previously run as a doctor's office, and so we're. Respectfully submitting a request to return the zoning to a an OD zoning.
Any questions from the board to the applicant? Or again, we can defer until after city's report.
I'll defer.
Um, all right, in that case, Mr. Gortos will take your report, please.
Mr. Chairman. The staff report submitted for the record. From Greenville County and City Fountain and Planning Staff to the Fountain and Planning Commission is docket number FI twenty dash zero one four. With the Bland Revocable Trust as the owner and the property location at four oh seven North Main Street. If your staff report looks familiar, it's because staff has the same opinion and has provided the same staff report. That was provided in early twenty eighteen regarding this property. Property being tax map number zero three. Four 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 zero 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 two hundred six hundred at half an acre. It's existing zoning is R fifteen residential district, and it's a low density residential district. Located all along Main Street in this particular portion, and the requested zoning, again, is office district or OD district. This was a doctor's office. Relatively recently, but per code, if a land use. Is what's called nonconforming or existed prior to the zoning or existed despite the zoning. And that goes away for over six months, it reverts back to the uses that are only permitted there. So after six plus months of no longer being a doctor's office and not having a replaceable use. It goes back to the uses that are only allowed in R fifteen residential, which has the name, is primarily single family residences. The adjacent land uses are residential in nature, though there are some institutional and other offices in the area. But the adjacent zoning is primarily or exclusively R fifteen residential districts, so. You have things such as the yacht center, the library. Some offices in the area, but those may still be zoned that are fifteen residential, and they're subject to the same issues. If they go out at use for several years and nothing replaces them, they are again a residential use. Your maps and your staff report to show. Your future land use map, current zoning, that zoning being that light yellow color, and its adjacency to downtown, the parcel is highlighted. By a circle. And you see from the aerial view from your our Greenville County GIS, how it differs from its surroundings. We've got very small homes, we've got large homes. We've got the yacht center and the library with invisible district distance of a block. So forth, and the bland office is the only one you can see. Rather clearly, other than four hundred main that has a parking lot. And that parking lot is in the side and rear of the structure, and that's part of the request. Some of the recommendations in the previous version of this report. Was that the parking lot in itself. Could remain if it's rezoned, it's just a matter of screening and getting it up to current standards, so it creeps into the front of the building. It takes up that whole side yard. Some parking situations, therefore, why this isn't, say, a planned development district or a planned office district. The reason it's a straight up office district is because of that parking. And that parking, per the staff report and through adjacent property owners. Should be screened through hedges or some other kind of screening mechanism that we require in our land development regulations for parking. Again, screening is a wall fence or compact evergreen hedge. Or other type of evergreen foliage or combination there that shall be provided on the side. And rear lot lines where any nonresidential use in this district is adjacent to a residential district, so. It's not so much removing the parking lot, but it would be getting it up to standard. I will take this time to note. The property owners who have spoken on this before requested that their their public comment be submitted again. I know this isn't the public comment period, but that applicant is not on the line, or that. Resident is not on the line this time, but asked me to share this with you. It states, Dear members of the Fountain Inn Planning Commission City Council. When I considered buying the residential property at one oh one Craig Street in two thousand and seven. I checked with the city to confirm the zoning of the prop- the Jane adjoining property, excuse me. That faces North Main Street as it was serving doctor's office. I was told by Public Works Office that it was on residential, therefore, the use of the town was nonconforming and would end once the use was removed. And the legal legal interval for resumption had passed. The current R fifteen zoning serves as a protection to legitimate neighborhoods along both Craig and Main Street. Skipping forward, the historic residential area of North Main Street also needs any protection. From possibility of more intense uses in this area that might disrupt the unique character of North Main Street and Fountain Inn in general. Especially during holidays and festivals when visitors come to experience, that is what is unique to the city. However, if it determines, the planning commission determines that the request meets the necessary conditions. To accommodate the requests of the property owners and their representative for the request to change the zoning. Then I trust that the commission will exercise due diligence and emphasize that they, the owners shall provide the prescribed buffer. Section five four five in their motion to approve. And that the owners are required to plant, construct this, even if the utility right of ways determined beforehand dictated that it move, you move farther back. If this buffer requirement is determined to be unfeasible beforehand for any reason. Then it stands as proof that the existing zoning is sound and should would not require a buffer between residential properties and should not be changed. Respectfully submitted, Randy Blackerby. I state that that public comment now because that was the original request. And recommendation of the planning report in twenty eighteen, and that is the recommendation. From staff from the planning report today. And that is exactly the same, and that we recommended approval with the condition to add. A hedge fence or a combination of to the southern property line per the requirements of section five four five screening. So again, staff recommends approval with that requirement, not necessarily condition it, but making sure that it meets the requirements. Of the screening section of zoning. With the note that this application was previously heard by this commission, and it did not pass with that vote at that time. Happy to provide any comment or questions at this time.
Any questions, guys?
So Greg, this is Dusty. The the request for the hedge is on the. Main Street side or the or the Craig Street side of the building?
It'd be, of those, it'd be the Craig Street side, it would essentially be the property line. Between the parcel and the adjacent residential parcel. So if you're looking at it. It's just just south of of Main Street where those properties lie. That letter was from that adjacent property owner, so essentially he can for some screening between himself and that property if the rezoning is approved by yourself and and city council. So the the southern portion of the property, not between the parking lot there, but not the side property, excuse me, parking lot.
This is the same exact funny money in classification is approximately two years ago, correct?
That's correct. Yeah, both requests were for OD office district.
Fortunately, I still hold that same opinion as I did the last time it came to us, though. I mean, it had moved back to what was originally intended for and R fifteen, I'm okay with it staying R fifteen.
Sean, if you um, you get a chance, um, meet Mr. Dickens, I've got a question for him. Same question I had, I guess about two years ago. Do we have any idea as to who a potential buyer for it is?
No, we have not. We we really haven't put it back on the market since that time, so we don't have, we don't know who the buyer might be. I can, I can only provide speculation as to what kind of person or business go there.
I mean, it's it's a very unique situation. I mean, I think thing ones is is Brent, I mean, my my opinion on it probably hasn't changed due to the fact that I mean, we really have actually could go there. I think I'd maybe speak for others might feel a little bit better if we had a reasonable possibility of knowing what exactly was going in there, but that that office district, man, it just leaves it leaves it wide open to a lot of more undesirable things for Main Street. Along with, I'm still calls and comments from residents on Main Street that are very, very concerned about this. Any other questions for Mr. Gortos?
Oh, I'm good.
Sean, do we have any public comment signed up for this?
We do not. I I believe what Mr. Gortos read was the was the public comment that was received. You know, I I would just add that this, I mean, I I think somebody else nailed it and that it is a kind of a unique situation. You know, there aren't a whole lot of properties on Main Street that that have a parking lot like this. You know, I I I don't foresee anybody purchasing this building and being able to turn it into a residence. So I I I think if a buyer was to was to purchase this, that it would have to be a a complete tear down and rebuild in order for this to be a residence. And so then the the only other alternative is to allow it to be some sort of a an office building. So so I understand the the commissioner's concerns, but I also understand that you know, the applicant's view on this as well is that we basically, we have a vacant building on Main Street that is is zoned residential, but as is for all intents and purposes cannot be made into a residence. So it it just, it puts everybody into a a tough situation.
I mean, I think I think either way, if it's residential or commercial, that building has to go through either get torn down or completely renovated. I don't know if it's operable as it is as an office. And so I can see both sides of this. I can see this trying to put a house there and being residential, which meets our current zoning. And I can see it being a small doctor's office or something like that. But it's the same, like I said, I think I think it was just a year ago, wasn't it, that we had this? I think I'm in the same opinion. I would like to see what it would be. I I I think it's a better opportunity to get rezoning if you came to us with with a tenant. I I I just, I I can see both sides of what this house can be or the property can be.
I think from a legal standpoint, that that's where it gets tricky. You know, it's a little bit of a chicken or the egg type of deal in that it's hard to get a tenant if you know, if you don't know whether it can be rezoned. And then I think we've talked about this before and that, you know, typically zoning decisions are not supposed to be made on the basis of, you know, what a tenant or who a tenant could be. That that's often how municipalities get into a lot of legal trouble is not zoning or zoning something because they prefer one tenant or one type of business over another. That's why Greg always talks about, you know, we're looking at colors on a map and things of that nature. So it it it's a tough one. I I agree that it'd be an easier pill to swallow if we knew. But that that makes it tough if if the applicant said, well, we have this tenant in mind and the planning commissioner said, well, we don't like that tenant, so we're not going to zone it for that. That that gets to be awfully hairy in the in the legal realm.
Yeah, from a from a black and white stance, I mean, it's from future land use maps is very clearly this residential. Yeah, hard hard to dispute that. So I mean, that's why, you know, obviously I'd want to work with property owner. I'm sure the the property is much more valuable as a as a business than it is is a lot to be torn down and and rebuild a house. It's very, very obvious that that's the case, but you've, you could inflict those other neighbors potentially with that zoning class is my is my concern and just leaving that that open is is concerning. You know, potentially have, you know, put the house or the property back on the market and and have the buyers, you know, contingent upon the zoning. I mean, properties do that all the time. I wish that's the scenario we had in front of us.
I think that's where I fell back to the last time we had this conversation, because, you know, it is this unique situation. You know, trying not to be ultra uber, you know, discriminatory towards anybody just trying to do, you know, with what they own. Because I don't like telling anybody what to do with, you know, what they own. It's yours, not mine. However, you know, you got you got other owners, you know, surrounding that that parcel of land and I'll just, I'd rather just default to, you know, what what legally, what what we have in front of us right now, which is our future land use map and that's R fifteen. Especially, you know, just keeping, I'm keeping the the neighbors in mind for, you know, forefront.
Discussion? I don't maybe feel like we have a general consensus, but.
I'm good.
Any motions from the board?
Yeah, I make a motion that we do not approve this rezon. I think, yeah, I just make the motion that we do not approve this rezoning.
We have a motion to disapprove the rezoning request. Is there a second?
Second.
This is motion on the floor and seconded to disapprove. Those in favor of the motion of disapproval, please state your name and say aye.
Wendell Tomlin, aye.
Brent Fonkeloffe, aye.
Aaron Hood, aye.
May I ask you?
Matt Waschowski, aye.
Just waiting on Dusty.
Yeah, Dusty, I've, I'm not gonna vote aye on this one. It's a, I'm probably the odd man up.
Can I interject Jake Dickens?
That allowed Sean or?
You're the chair, you can allow what you want.
Yes, Mr. Dickens, the vote's been accounted, but yes, you can interject.
So if we come back with it with a specific tenants purchaser and so forth, at that time, knowing what business and who that is, then you may consider it at that time.
I'm I'm not gonna say yes or no to that. Clearly, I don't think we're supposed to, but you heard. You've heard, I think that's the general consensus from the board, just from their discuss.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
If that is, if you do think that that is the general consensus, one of the I would ask that maybe you all reconsider the denial and have a vote to table. Because if if the vote to deny is passes, which it did and is held up, then there's another length time period before the applicant can can come back to you all. So if this was something that you thought that you would reconsider at a at a later date, I I would recommend changing the motion to a to a motion to table.
I I for one am totally found that. I mean, I want to work with the property owner. Like I said, it's just it's it's close, it's just, there's a lot of questions there. I can't speak for the board, but I'm sure I'm sure Dusty, I'm assuming you're okay with that.
Yeah, I'm glad I'm glad to make a motion to table this denial or until the the date required by the property owner to to get back to us. I don't know exactly how to phrase it up, but I make that.
With that being a motion, I guess I would ask if Mr. Tomlin would be willing to rescind his motion.
No, not really. No.
What do we do in that case? I'm not stooped on rules of order.
Well.
Got your book in front of you, Sean?
Well, no, but what I would say is that Mr. Tomlin can keep his motion. You can check to see if there's still a second and if there is, you guys can do another vote. And then that and then just see how it shakes out from there. If that motion doesn't pass, then another one can can occur.
Who seconded that, Brent?
Seconding Wendell's vote.
Did you do that?
Yes.
Do you want to rescind your second?
No.
Uh, in that case, we'll have to recall the vote. We state your name and vote once again, or with you, Mr. Keller.
Dusty Keller, no.
Now, now, what are we do, what are we doing here, guys? We're doing what? You spoke at the same time.
All right, we are revote, we're voting on the exact same motion that you had, the a a motion to deny.
Oh, okay.
Uh, Mr. Tomlin, what's your vote?
Uh, deny, yes.
Mr. Phil Fanaki?
Brent Fonkeloffe.
Probably butchered that, sorry. We've got Mr. Keller's Matthews vote. Matthew, if you want me to go first, you can go after.
Are you, are you calling me?
Yeah, so we're we're revoting on the original motion.
I was waiting for you to say Waschowski. I I will vote no, that I'm more in a post to table it for now. I'm more hoping to table it for now, because I vote no.
Okay. Aaron Hood, no. What does that count?
That's a three two, so the motion does not carry, so the floor is open for another motion. Such as a motion to table.
I Dusty Keller motion to table the decision to rezone, still the date approved for the applicant to get back to the planning commission on a possibility of tenant.
All right, so there's a motion and a second. Once again, we'll do roll call voting, starting with Mr. Keller.
Dusty Keller, aye.
Matthew Waschowski.
Matthew Waschowski, aye.
Wendell Tomlin.
Nate.
I just wanted you to hear hear my name said again. Uh, Brent Fonkeloffe, no.
Oh, Aaron Hood.
This.
Three two. What's that count, Sean?
Yeah, three two, so this docket, or this case has has been tabled.
Can I interject one more time? Jake Dickens?
Sure.
All right, thank you. Um, so I won't do the last name and Mr. Tomlin. Just to be clear, kind of what I'm hearing from you guys is under no circumstance you support a rezoning.
Right now, I don't know.
Yes, well, Wendell Tomlin, that's correct.
Okay, all right, I'm just, I'm just trying to be clear and then the other three members, depending on who we may have recommend the end user, that may that may sway you one way or another.
I would be, I would be remiss to not emphasize on the floor is there's a pending motion to table with a three two vote. Let's not discuss what would sway each other's votes, the votes have already occurred or subject to.
We're good. I understand.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
There is. I would just make one one comment to Mr. Dickens, I think. What just occurred, I think you see that the board is is willing to work with you. It's a very very sensitive lot, I guess, situation.
All right.
Take take that away as a positive.
I understand. Thank you for your time, guys.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Got a motion to adjourn. The second.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks for all your time, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.